Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to see you all here this afternoon. Thank you for taking a busy time out of your schedule. We appreciate your presence. We've got a number of items that we need to take care of today. The first is a public hearing on the budget. Therefore, I am going to call the public hearing on the budget to order. Chris Wodka is going to walk us through that budget, and then we will have opportunity for a call from the public. Please.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Chair, governing board members, Madam President, Secretary, colleagues, and any guests present this afternoon. First topic is to review the 1819 budget. If you recall, at the April meeting, we went through Schedules A, B, and C. It was a tentative at that point in time. There have been no changes whatsoever since the April Board meeting, so what you see in front of you is exactly the same that you've seen back in April. I'll just highlight a couple of items and then answer any questions that you may have. First thing is our Schedule A. To refresh your memories, the total operating fund is going up by 1.1%. And all three of the funds listed are going down by 37.4%. And that is due to the payoff of the construction dollars. We have less dollars to pay in construction for fiscal year 19 than we have in our current year 18. Total funds, personnel compensation, salaries and benefits. All other benefits are only going up 4 tenths of 1% as an overall total. And our primary tax levy, which we're also approving this afternoon, is at 2.1766, which is a 2.9% decrease from our rate a year ago. Schedule B is a summarization of all of our revenues. Total revenues for all of the funds are $81,867,050. That includes another decrease this year to their state funding, zero tuition dollar increase, and the tax levy dollars that are from the first page. And Schedule C is our total expenditures, broken out by the various categories. And you'll see that that equates to the total revenues by fund, also the $81,867,050. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions on the budget.
Thank you. I invite any questions from members of the board relative to the budget issue. No questions from the board. Now we will invite the public. Call to the public. Boarders prohibited from discussing, considering, or acting on items raised during the call to the public. This public hearing is on the budget only. Is, are there any of the members of the public who would like to comment on the budget as presented? Hearing none. Then we will close the public hearing and call to order a special meeting to adopt the 2018-2019 district budget. Adoption of the budget certificate and tax rate. Mr. Wodka.
Yes, thank you. Two items before you, action items. First recommendation is the adoption of the colleges budget, which is the 2018, 2017, 2018 fiscal year 18 budget. And a second item is the approval of the certificate of adoption, authorizing the Pinal County Board of Supervisors to levy the appropriate primary and secondary property tax rates.
Would entertain a motion. Probably need to take them in separate motions at this time. First motion that we need is to adopt the budget certificate.
Mr. President, I would make that motion that we adopt the budget certificate.
I would second that. Have a motion and a second to adopt the budget certificate. Those in favor of the motion to adopt the budget certificate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously. I would now entertain a budget to approve the tax rates as presented.
Motion to approve tax.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Hearing none. We will proceed to vote. Those in favor of the motion to approve the tax rate as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. We will now adjourn the special meeting and proceed now to call the regular meeting to order. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance, and I would like to invite Mr. Jack Yarrington to lead us today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We have one individual who has signed and requested permission to address the board. And during the call to the public, which is the next item on the agenda, would like to invite Kristin Benedict to come forward.
So I'm going to try to do this without crying, guys, but there may be some tears shed. Governing Board President Gibson and Board Members President Elliott, CAC Leadership Staff in France. I come here to talk about opportunities and express my sincere appreciation for CAC. Opportunities for a high school student, young, first generation, to come to college and get her education in her backyard, not far from her home. And an incredible education it was. Opportunities, oh, sorry, guys. Opportunities for me to be, to come back here from the industry and spend the last 14 years teaching agriculture, developing courses aligned with industry and transfer. Then given the opportunity to lead and build the STEM program from the ground up. Opportunities to teach full-time agriculture, not only in the area that I love, but start the careers of hundreds of students. Opportunities to become the chair of now the fastest-growing division in the college and build programs, partnerships, and community. And the trust that it took by our college president to let a rookie department chair have the opportunity to sit alongside her as she brokered partnerships with Lucid, Sunt, and Mentor on how to really do workforce development. I don't know where I would have been without CAC, but the opportunities that await me are because of CAC. I firmly believe that we're put on this earth to make an impact every day in the life of our students and in our community. And I want each of you to know that you've made an impact in my life. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone.
We are not supposed to comment on call-to-the-public items. I would just think, on the behalf of the board, we are grateful for all the employees of Central Arizona College. Thank you for what you do. It's fun to watch each of you progress through your various careers and the impacts for good that you have. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are consent matters unless they are removed from the consent agenda at this time. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any governing board upon motion duly made, seconded, and approved. Are there any items that would be removed at this time?
Mr. Chairman, uh, yes. And it's item under, what do we have here? I don't want to hit the wrong target. Um, yep. Okay, it's item number nine. And it is combined resolution affecting county treasurer transactions for fiscal year 2018 to 19.
Item number nine. Approve combined resolutions affecting county treasurer's transactions fiscal year 2018 and 19. Is that the correct one?
That's the correct one. And this is for discussion.
All right, very good. Item nine would entertain a motion to remove?
I believe that there is no motion necessary to remove this item for discussion. I could be wrong with Robert Ruhl's order, but the item needs discussion.
In the second sentence of the paragraph introducing the consideration of the consent agenda, there is a statement that says that there, "by any governing board member upon motion duly made, seconded, and approved." I believe it requires an action to remove that item from the consent agenda. The chair would entertain a motion to remove item nine.
Motion to remove item nine.
Have a motion to remove item nine. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remove item nine from the agenda. Those in, is there any discussion on the motion to remove? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of removing item nine, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I have two ayes. Those opposed? Nay? Mrs. Christensen, I missed your, I missed your vote.
I have no problem with it being removed for discussion.
I have three in favor, one opposed, removing. The chair was waiting to break the tie. In this case, it's not needed, but the chair would have voted aye. Item nine is removed from the consent agenda. What we will do now is to approve the consent agenda and then bring item nine forward as a discussion item with possibility of approving after we have discussion. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item nine.
I would make such motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus item nine, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed by saying nay? The consent agenda is approved. Item nine now will be brought forward for discussion. Invite Chris Wodka to come forward and handle that item of business.
Thank you. This is a standing item, approved each year by the board, something that's required by Pinal County Board of Supervisors, which allows us to invest the funds, make transfers out of the funds. So it is just standard operating procedure that we have each year for approval at this time of the year.
Questions and discussion?
I have never seen this item come before the boarding previously.
Every May.
Excuse me. Um, I totally respect VP Wodka. However, I have concerns about this item in terms of its implications for further political issues. One, that the treasurer is being appointed as the individual to invest our monies. We are very lucky at this time to have an outstanding treasurer for Pinal County. But to continue having the treasurer do this, my knees are knocking. Secondly, I do not believe that the Board of Supervisors should be in decisions with the college unless it's a special program. For example, let's say, what's his name? Um, Goodman wants to bolster our technology program. That is well invited if the plan is clear and understanding and insurances and liabilities are met. I realize this resolution is more like a policy. I don't like it at this point because I've seen some horrendous activity, unfortunately, in Santan Valley that could be disruptive to us. And I want to protect this college as much as I can from any fraud or problems, financial problems that occur in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Banks. We appreciate that. Mr. Wodka, is there anything that you would say in addition to this item?
No, I'd just like to say that, you know, we've been doing this for 40-plus years. Never had an issue with the Pinal County managing the investments on our behalf. We have complete control over our investments. It's not like one or any of the supervisors can remove any of our funds. This is strictly for our safekeeping of the investments, and when we need the dollars, they're taken out and withdrawn. So it's just been a standard operating procedure that we adopt on a yearly basis.
But why is this being revealed now and not after the six years I've served on this board?
It has been taken to every May board meeting since my eight years at this institution and about 32 years prior to that. Every single May board meeting.
With the discussion that we have had, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the combined resolutions affecting the county treasurer's transactions fiscal year 2018 and 19.
I would make such motion.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve the combined resolutions affecting the county treasurer's transactions fiscal year 2018 and 19. Hearing no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of the motion to approve the combined resolutions affecting county treasurer's transactions fiscal year 2018 and 19, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Nay?
Aye.
Nay.
I have four ayes and one nay. Did I record that correct? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the non-consent portion of the agenda. We are going to have a first reading on the policy for transition policy. Dr. Elliott.
Thank you. This is an information item only for first reading of the board policy on policy transition. So this is a board policy. As you know, we're in the process of revising and reviewing all of our policies at the institution. And currently, some of our policies may be in a situation where they conflict with previous language. And so this policy is basically designed to dictate what supersedes during the transition period time. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the board?
Just have a comment.
Please.
First, applaud the president and your staff for looking this forward, thinking that in change management, things are going to be conflicting at some point. And I think the policy is dead on. But something to consider, it looks like this addresses known conflicts or duplications. Maybe some language, something like, "In the event of the most recently revised or adopted policy produces a conflict or duplication that is contrary to the best interests of the college as determined by affected policy owners." I wrote this down before. I just didn't make this up. "The president will determine the appropriate course of action in writing until such time all affected policies are updated and synchronized." All I'm saying here is that there are a lot of moving parts, and maybe the most recent may, for some reason, may have missed an item. And I didn't want, I don't want us to automatically say, well, that one rules. But allow you and your staff the ability to, in the interim, to say that this makes more sense, and we'll do it that way. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. If you would just email me that, we'll add it.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Other comments from the board relative to the first reading of the policy on transition? Thank you very much. We appreciate the help with that, and we will give it due consideration as we move forward. Next item on the agenda is number 12, the AADJB report.
Well, hello. And this is a less contentious matter, I hope. Um, first of all, what has been called the AADJB is now changing its name. And where's the mouse? It's beautiful. Okay. Um, first of all, our name change is going to be the Arizona Association of Community College Trustees. The mission and purpose, to boil it down. To boil it down is, our mission is going to be aimed for advocacy of community colleges to the legislature. I mentioned that two months ago. Um, and how we change from a 501(c)(3) to 501(c)(4) is going to be a real trick. The second is to provide trustee professional development opportunities. Now, to address the advocacy, and the advocacy, we're looking at student excellence, success focus, accessibility, affordability. And with everything going on with K through 12's progress meter and salary, increasing salaries, this is gonna be a challenge. Last time I gave you a table that was part of the progress meter. And if you will note Arizona Educational Progress Meter, if you just Google it, it will give you all the background. I prefer PPT, but time was limited. Anyway, um, you could see that the entity, the governmental entities, the cities, the towns, and the counties that have accepted this program, which is being promoted by Governor Ducey. Um, there's a lot of participation from the county of Pinal. This one look familiar? Let's see. Oh, I can do it. Thank you very much. Um, if you'll notice that what I gave you last time is still in place, but now there's a target rate for 2030. And, um, of course, the rates are going up except for youth opportunity, which you have to read very carefully. I looked on the website to see if they had target rates for Pinal County. They do not at this time. They have little bars showing yes, no, et cetera. Um, I have to get this information from Joe Bursard, our superintendent. And then last, not to put you to sleep here. Okay. And then last, to explain, just a minute. And excuse me. Um, the increase in salary for the teachers. Um, this graph shows salary, median salary, and then rank, median rank. And you'll notice that, um... They believe that Arizona, because the salary is so low, its rank is low. I am not offering an opinion at this point. I'm just showing you what's out in the media world. And it would be interesting to have you go to expect more, Arizona. Give your opinions, because that's going to affect us. And nobody is talking about it. That's why the trustees group is trying to move to be a 40503. For... Is that right? No. Anyway, is trying to be an advocacy group and is working with an organization called It's gonna be difficult. It's gonna be long. I imagine we've got some good people on our board. It should take about two years. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Banks? No questions. Thank you very much for your report. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is report from Central Arizona College President, Dr. Elliott.
Thank you, Board President Gibson. Good afternoon, everyone. I have a few updates to provide. First, I'll start with the legislative update. The governor has signed the public meeting bill that expands the definition of a public meeting to include one-way communication by one member of a public body sent to a quorum of members resulting in electronic exchange of information and communication as a violation of open meeting laws. And that has, the governor has signed that. We've been talking about that one for a while.
Just for clarification, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So if I understand correctly, what this means is, is that I, as a board member, cannot email my colleagues as a group with any information that I need to communicate through you?
What it means is that if you email the group and it results in an email exchange that has to do with any potential board action, that would be a violation of open meeting. If you're just sharing information about an article you read or anything of that nature, it wouldn't. But any, any one-way communication that results into communication back and forth on any board actionable type item.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the clarification.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from members of the board relative to that issue? I think we're good.
Okay. The non-lethal weapon bill failed, thank goodness, from, in the Senate. It failed to pass the Senate. So we don't have that bill that we will have to deal with in the future. Well, we may have to in the future. It probably will be back. The governor has signed a free, the Free Expression Bill that requires colleges and universities to develop and adopt a policy on freedom of expression. So I'm sure you'll be seeing that policy soon. And then the governor has signed the budget, and CAC will receive the same amount as last year with 1.5 million and 96,000 for STEM. So there's no big news there. Any other, any questions on the legislative update?
No questions.
Okay. For the district update, a couple of things that I want to highlight. We just received notification this week that we are eligible for the fund down of the Title V grant that we wrote last year, and we're not funded for. So this is really good news. This grant will assist us with our, our approaches in guided pathways, proactive advising, and developmental app math redesign, and math boot camp. So the grant is a five-year grant, totally near $2 million. So we will know in the future if we get the fund down. Right now, we're just eligible, and I had to send them information saying that we were still interested. And then later, we'll receive notification if we were in the fund down slate. Congressman O'Halloran visited the Signal Peak Campus in April. He was very generous with his time. He was almost here two and a half hours, which is kind of unheard of for a congressman to spend that much time on a college campus. But he was here and was really wanting to learn about our partnerships with business and industry, in particular, our Sunt partnership. And he was very, very impressed, and we appreciated his time. There are two correspondences in the Dropbox for you today. One is from the Government Finance Officers Association for our Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financing reporting for 2017. So congratulations to Chris, and Louisa, and Jody, and your whole team. This has been, you've received this since 2015, 2015, 16, 17. No pressure to get that 18, but the bar is set high in the expectations. And so if we can maybe give them some recognition. And Mark's back there, too. And Stephanie. And then there's also a correspondence in there from the National Association for the Education of Young Children, recognizing service, scholarly work, and national leadership of Vicki Young Shiveredton, one of our faculty members. And I will answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Dr. Elliott? No questions. All right. We will now proceed then with the Business Affairs Report, item 12. Chris Wadka.
Thank you and good afternoon once again. Three items for your information. First one being the monthly budget reports. This is for the month ended now, April of 2018. Shows that district's general fund expenditures and committed funds are at 86.27% of the total budget, which is an increase slightly over 4% from last April of 2017, which was 82.21%. So 10 months of the fiscal year have now been completed. Any questions on our budget?
No questions.
Thank you. Second item is the awarded purchases of 20,000 and over. Handful of them. First one is the microwave parts, Logicalis Inc., Tempe, Arizona, 81,470, 74. And that is to replace damaged and failing microwave parts throughout the district. The next one is automatic sterilizers and buttocks models, Medical Shipment LLC, Elk Grove Village, Illinois, 25,373, 20. And that is to purchase UltraClave automatic sterilizers and intramuscular models that are used for the medical assistance program that is for the Carl Perkins Grant. Next one is servers, CDWG Incorporated, Vernon Hills, Illinois, 37,155, 42. And that is to upgrade our NVR servers and hardware for the district. Next one, consulting for IT projects, Avid Consulting out of Gilbert, Arizona, 50,000 even. That is to contract for consulting services for the entire district. We have a license renewal, Dub Labs LLC, Vienna, Virginia, 25,000. That is to renew our annual license with Dub Labs. And the last one is various IT parts, CDWG Incorporated, Vernon Hills, Illinois, 26,955, 65. And that is to purchase various IT parts, also serving the district. Any question on our purchases?
Mr. Miller has a question.
Just on the first one, the microwave parts again, what, what kind of microwave are those? Is it the cooking or lab or?
No, these are the dishes, the IT microwave. This isn't microwave as far as oven microwave, no.
All right. Thank you. Make good share.
Other questions? Thank you very much for your report. We appreciate that. Next item is monitoring reports, and Chris is remaining at the podium because he knows he's next. Is there another item?
I'm next. There's one more, the ERP report.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Ah, yes. ERP update.
I, I won't read everything, but you, you have an update since the April meeting, both on student services, on academics, on our CRM, which is a customer relationship management database, and also on the HR payroll and finance. And just to make a point, that is our last module to go live. Anticipated date still being July of this upcoming year. Pending, as you see in italics there, that we are, that the data and processes are all validated and 100% correct. So if we have that assurance with our staff and with our vendor, then the go-live date will be July of 18. And we have scheduled various training sessions. They're listed on the second page, from procurement, travel, budgeting, and so forth, for a couple of weeks in the month of June. Any questions on the ERP?
No questions. Now we're ready for number three, for the next item.
The ends monitoring reports. I have 6.5, 6, and 7 this afternoon. The first one is government grants received as a percentage of revenue. And the board here has decided that a target be at or above the peer group average, which is about 25%, if I'm not mistaken. And what we are, we are lagging a few percentage points below that. And it's, it's a little difficult to tell exactly what goes in there, and the iPads data is lagging slightly. So for instance, the 2016 number results percentage realized in 2014 and 15. But we're slightly below the 25% target that the board has established, and that's for all governmental grants. 6.6 is just the private grants. And the board there selected a target of 5%. We are at about 1%. Our peer institutions are anywhere between, are actually lower than the 1%. They're just between the zero and the 1%. These are very difficult grants to receive. But we are planning a number of improvements in the future as listed, and recent improvements. Some of the recent ones are the upward bound grant that we received, the National Science Foundation Grant for welding, Daisy Brand donation, cyber weld donations, and just a host of them, a number of them that you see in your packet. And, excuse me, the planned improvements are continuing our fundraising efforts, our alumni banquet, and additional grant funding opportunities, and also continuing to work with our community for outreach and various types of partnerships. So we're slightly below our target of 5%, but a number of recent and improved, and future improvements should raise that percentage for us. And the last one is 6.7, which is the actual to budgeted expenditures. The board selected a target there of 98%. I think I have mentioned this a few times over the last few board meetings, that our target was traditionally around 85 to 88%. We are going to be closer to the 100%. Obviously, 98 is the board's target, so that's what we'll be shooting for. Some of the recent improvements that we've had in that area is some zero-based budgeting that was implemented for part-time and student employment for the current year, for the future, meaning fiscal year 20 budget. We do plan on going for a zero-based budgeting system for all line, line items outside of full-time salary lines. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on these three monitoring reports.
Could we go back to the previous chart? The gifts that are shown there, are they tangible materials? Because I was getting confused. You were throwing in some federal stuff, and I thought, and I'm sorry, I'm done in my distance glasses on, the, these were tangible gifts?
Tangible gifts and...
Of physical. Some, some of these are, this, this iPads measure kind of puts gifts and donations in together. And so if I understand it correctly from Sylvia, so when we look at this, this would include, like, the Daisy Brand, they gave us a forklift, so there's a value to that. So that is tangible. Some is just money. So like, when you look at the YADA program, and we do fundraising for that, that becomes some of the fundraising for that, the, the gifts. So it's kind of co-mingled things together in this measure.
But if it's, if it's a physical asset versus dollars, it does represent a fair market value for that particular item. So in the sense, everything is tangible. Guess there's a cost associated with it.
Okay.
Other questions? Hearing none, we thank you for your report on the ends.
Thank you.
6.5, 6.6, and 6.7. Thank you. We're about to go into executive session. Invite those who are in the audience to stay, if you'd like, outside, of course. But you don't have to stay if you don't want to. We understand completely. Entertain a motion to go into executive section, and executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03.
I move that we go into executive session.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
I have one nay. Did you vote nay?
No.
Okay.
Aye.
Unanimous in the affirmative. Thank you very much. We are now in executive session.
...of Dr. Jackie Elliott by one year to 2021, and to increase her salary by 2%, which is in line to the increases for the other administrative personnel. And her current travel allowance should be amended to meet the actual and expected duties of the president.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. We have adjusted and extended the contract of the chief executive officer. Thank you and congratulations. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you, guys.
We have our next meeting coming up in June, and we also need to turn into, are the dates that we are available or not available in July for our retreat? So please note on a piece of paper or in your communication with Mary Lou, what, the dates that you are available.
That's for July?
That's for July. Month of July is the riz- retreat date. And with that, we are done with the agenda. Therefore, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.